Okay. Well, good morning and welcome to the March 8th meeting of the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority Board of Trustees. I hope everyone was able to join us using the go-to meeting instructions that were provided. And just to note, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on our website. Some ground rules for the meeting. Please mute your device when you're not speaking so we can reduce the background noise. When you're making a motion or a comment, please state your name so we know who you are. I also appreciate if you say the county you're from for the board. For those of you logged into the website or app, please use the chat box to indicate when you'd like to comment or ask a question so that we can demonize the amount of people talking over one another. And Ted will be monitoring the chat box and will call on people in the order that requests come in. After that, we'll ask for any comments from those of you who are joining us by phone only. Are there any questions about this? All right, now to start the meeting, I'll ask Beverly Morris to read the Open Public Meetings Act. Good morning, Beverly.
Good morning, Commissioner. This is to advise that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 P.L., 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been forwarded to the Newark Star-Ledger, the Asbury Park Press, the Courier-News, the Daily Record, the Home News Tribune, the Jersey Journal, and the New Jersey Herald.
Thank you. And roll call?
Burgin?
Peter Botzolos, present.
Essex?
David Antonio, present.
Hudson?
Ivan Nicholas, present.
Hunterdon?
Zach Rich, present.
Jersey City?
Marco Patel, present.
Higginson?
Charlie Kenny, present.
Monmouth?
Terry O'Connor, present.
Morris?
Kathy D. Filippo, present.
Ocean?
Jack Kelly, present.
Michael Cicato, nonvoting, present.
Okay, I see--
Sorry, I was, sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. John Bartlett, also present.
Okay, thank you. Somerset?
Tara Sewey, present.
Essex?
Chris Carney, present.
Union?
Betty Jane Kowalski, Union County.
Warren?
Jason Sernoski, present.
Governor's Office?
Laura Nathan LaRusso, present.
NJDOT?
Michael Russo, present.
NJ Transit?
Lou Milan here.
Okay, that would be present, nonvoting. Port Authority?
Jay Shelpfield, here.
Citizens Representative? Okay, we have 18 voting members present and a quorum.
Thank you, Beverly. We're going to start with the approval of the minutes for the January 11th board meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Not hearing any. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, for a minute.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Commissioner Kelly, Ocean County.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. In a second?
Commissioner Sewey, second.
Thank you very much. Are all in favor?
Aye.
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 Do I have any opposed? Any, anyone who wishes to abstain?
Commissioner Chris Carney abstained.
Thank you. And do you have to do a roll call for this, Beverly, or just we all approved?
We just, you just took care of it. So the minutes are approved.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to take this moment to share my report with you. And again, I want to say good morning and thank you to everyone who has, who has joined us today to participate. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize our two newest board members. Commissioner Zach Rich, who previously served as Huntington County's alternate, is now the county's representative, and we look forward to continuing to work with him. So welcome Zach to the board, to joining us. And I also want to welcome Christopher Carney, who was elected to Sussex County's Board of Commissioners in January and is the county's newest representative to our board. So welcome, Christopher.
Thank you.
On the topic of the board, I wanted to share that the board handbook has been updated, but due to the pandemic, it was not printed this year. A link to the document will be distributed by email after this meeting. Regardless of how long you've been on the board, I'm sure you'll find that the handbook is a valuable resource. It provides an overview of the NJTPA's planning and capital programming processes, contact information for the board members and partner agencies, also our bylaws and other important information. And I encourage you to take a look at that and get to be more familiar with our, with our resources and our handbook. Turning to today's agenda, I want to recognize and thank Eric Zimmerman, who is the Deputy Director of the National Association of Regional Councils. Eric is also the Director of Transportation Programs at NAR. As you all know, there's a lot of changes going on in Washington with President Biden in the White House and Secretary Pete Buttigieg overseeing the Federal Department of Transportation. And I hope I did not ruin his last name. We'll hear more about the Slate of America and its federal transportation policy and legislation outlook, but I'll share that I am optimistic about this administration's commitment to investing in our infrastructure. We know how important the trans-Hudson transportation is to our region. President Biden has publicly committed to the Hudson River Tunnel project, an overall gateway program. I'm hopeful that we will see federal funding commitments to advance these important projects, which remains central components of our long-range plan. And speaking of the plan, staff has been in the process of developing our latest update which outlines the NJTPA's vision for the future, which calls for making transportation safer and equitable for all users. The plan has a horizon year of 2050, which means we must also consider emerging technologies and other trends that could change the way we move people and goods over the next 30 years. The pandemic has certainly presented challenges in forecasting these trends. For example, the shift to remote work has dramatically affected commuting and transit use. It's too early to know to what extent companies will shift to remote work or on a more permanent basis, but these are the sort of things we must consider as we plan for our future. Another risk to our plan must consider is how to make our transportation system more reliant, I'm sorry, more resilient. Natural disasters like SuperSon Sandy, last month's storm that affected Texas, have shown us that we must be prepared for the changing climate and how it impacts us down the road. Mary will tell us more about the development of the plan in her report next. Regarding today's agenda, the board is being asked to vote on two action items, the NJTPA's annual work program for the next fiscal year and support for two performance measure targets. These actions show that the region is continuing to meet all of its federal planning requirements despite the challenges we have faced during this pandemic. And the NJTPA also continues to help keep projects funded and moving. In this committee report, Commissioner Bartlett will talk about four transportation improvement programs modifications approved by the Project Priorization Committee. While these modifications don't need to come before the full board, they demonstrate our commitment to helping deliver the projects that we plan and program. So again, thank you for joining us today, and that concludes my report. I'm going to ask, does NJDOT have anything that they'd like to report on this morning?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. How about in New Jersey Transit? Do you have anything to report this morning?
I do not, but thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'm going to ask Mary if you'd kindly present your report to the board this morning. Good morning, Mary.
Good morning, and thank you. I'm pleased to report on activities of the central staff since our last board meeting. I hope everyone fared well during last month's storms and bad weather. As Chair D. Filippo said, it's another reminder of the need to prepare our infrastructure for increasingly extreme weather and other disruptive events. Such events are placing ever greater emphasis on the need for incorporating resilience, the ability to bounce back and recover quickly from catastrophic events into our policies, planning, and investments. One way the NJTPA helps foster resilience, as well as safety, health, equity, and the economy, is through the efforts outlined in our annual Unified Planning Work Program, or UPWP. Again, as our chair mentioned, the board will be acting on the fiscal year 2022 UPWP today. At recent board and committee meetings, you have heard about the work program's development, and we have welcomed your input and involvement. I would like to remind everyone that approval of the UPWP is a key milestone each year. The work program sets our strategic direction for the coming year under the direction of the board with input from our partners and stakeholders. It's how we build upon past initiatives and achievements and set new courses to respond to changing needs going forward into future years. This year's UPWP does just that. New work tasks of note include improving our work related to Title VI civil rights requirements, including compliance and reporting by the subregions, studying freight rail crossings in the region, developing a plan to promote active transportation, validating and improving our travel demand model, and supporting regional implementation of the state's Strategic Highway Safety Plan. These are all tasks being led by central staff, but it's important to remember that the UPWP also provides funding for transportation planning work in our 15 county and city subregions. This includes funds to every subregion for core planning work, as well as, as well as competitive programs such as the subregional studies. The UPWP also outlines the activities of the state's eight transportation management associations and provides funding to these TMAs for a wide range of programs. The NJTPA has long been committed to these pass-through programs, which put a significant amount of federal dollars to work at improving regional and local transportation and mobility. As the chair noted, one of the key tasks in our current work program is development of Plan 2050, our updated long-range plan. We're nearly finished with the extensive public outreach we've done for this plan. This included numerous virtual public outreach meetings, focus groups with members of traditionally underrepresented communities, an online survey, and three topical symposia. The last symposium focused on realizing opportunity through transportation and was held on January 26. Currently, one of our final outreach activities is a contest for kids, asking them to submit videos, audio recordings, poems, drawings, or short essays on their vision for the future of transportation. We have had some teachers get their students involved, and we encourage you to do the same with the children in your families. Details are on the NJTPA Plan 2050 website, where you can also find plan-related videos and recordings of the symposia. A related activity is our ongoing Up Next North Jersey group, composed of young adults, which meets periodically to provide input on Plan 2050 and on other NJTPA work. They last met on January 21st to discuss resilience, and their meeting featured a presentation by the state's climatologist, Dr. David Robinson. It was a highly relevant discussion, as today's young adults will become tomorrow's leaders faced with responding to climate change and the intertwined issues of social equity, public health, and sustainability. The input we received from these and other efforts, together with in-house modeling and technical analysis, will provide the foundation for the final Plan 2050 document. As I have mentioned previously, a formal public comment period is planned for late summer, with board action expected in the fall. At the same time, we expect that the board will be asked to approve a new transportation improvement program, or TIP, as well as an air quality conformity determination, both of which are also now under preparation and which are critical to the NJTPA's mission and operations. So we anticipate a busy and productive few months ahead, and I thank you all for your continuing support and involvement. And that concludes my report.
Commissioner, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I just realized I was on mute. So I'm going to call on Commissioner John Bartlett, Chair of the Project Priorization Committee, to give their committee report. Good morning, John.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So I'm pleased to report on the activities of the Project Priorization Committee. At the joint committee meeting in February, the committee considered four action items. First, the committee approved a set of four modifications to the fiscal year's 2020 through 2023 Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP. The first modification adds $1.5 million in federal funding for the preliminary engineering phase of work in fiscal year 2021 for the Route 46 Paquannick Street to County Route 513, also known as West Main Street, project in Morris County. Funding for this phase is now ready for authorization in 2021. The second modification adds $4.75 million in Port Authority of New York and New Jersey funds in fiscal year 2021 for preliminary engineering for the Route 1 and 9 interchange at Route I-278 project in Union County. Additionally, $1 million in state funds is added for design in 2023 to match current funding in the state TIP, State Transportation Improvement Program. For the Route 18 East Brunswick Drainage and Pavement Rehabilitation Project in Middlesex County, the committee approved a request to add $4.95 million in the current fiscal year for right-of-way and to reprogram $37.2 million for construction in 2022 and 2023. The fourth modification approved by the committee concerns the Route 206 Valley Road to Brown Avenue project in Somerset County. The modification removes the utility phase of work, which had been allocated $5.5 million. That work will now be conducted as part of the construction phase, which has allocated $71.5 million in federal funds from 2023 through 2025. The funding amount for construction must increase due to additional earthwork, stormwater management, right-of-way acquisition, and bridge construction costs. Next, the committee considered three project financial plan annual updates. These updates are required for major projects with a total cost from $100 million to $500 million in federal funding. The updated financial plan for the Route 206 project in Somerset County reflects a total project cost of $487 million, an increase of $34 million, which is mainly due to increased design effort for the Doctor's Way to Valley Road segment, updated cost estimates, increased construction support services, and minor construction change orders. The updated financial plan for the Route 72 Manahawk and Bay Bridges project in Ocean County reflects a decrease in total project cost of about $13 million to $328 million. This results from changes resulting from finalized design and actual construction costs. The updated financial plan for the Route 3, Route 46 Valley Road and Nosh Rifle Camp Road Interchange project in Passaic County reflects a $7.2 million increase in total project costs to $316 million, mainly due to construction change orders from unanticipated site conditions, utility conflicts, and contractor bids that were higher than the engineers' estimate. The committee approved the four modifications and three financial plan updates, and no further action is needed. Also at the meeting, central staff briefed the committee on the development of the region's draft fiscal year 2022 TIP. Our subregions have had the opportunity to review and comment on the state's unconstrained draft transportation capital program, often referred to as the project pool, which provides the foundation for the TIP to be finalized later this year. That concludes the Project Priorization Committee report for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartlett. Now I'll call on Commissioner Jack Kelly, Chair of the Planning and Economic Development Committee, to give his committee report. Good morning, Jack.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair. I am pleased to report on the activities of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. At the February joint meeting, the committee considered two action items. The first concerns approval of the fiscal year 2022 Unified Planning Work Program, or UPWP. As Mary noted, this document describes all regional transportation planning and related work being done by central staff, the subregions, and the transportation management associations during the upcoming state fiscal year, which begins July 1st. Drafts of the UPWP and budget were distributed to the board, RTAC, NJDOT, New Jersey Transit, and our other federal partners in December for review and comment. In addition to providing helpful suggestions for enhancing or clarifying work tasks, NJDOT commended the NJTPA for developing a work program that responds to federal emphasis areas and state planning priorities. We thank the NJDOT for this feedback. I'd also like to note that NJDOT commended Morris County for including work that fosters coordination with railroad operators and interested businesses to consider moving more goods via rail. NJDOT also commended Passaic County for including an elective activity to help develop policies and methodologies for producing more accurate crash data for environmental justice communities. This will help achieve the state of New Jersey's vision to move towards zero deaths and will do so with an emphasis on equity. Approval of the fiscal year 2022 UPW-2 is listed as action item number one on today's agenda. Next, the committee recommended support for the adjusted pavement and bridge performance measure targets set by the NJDOT. These are among the federally required statewide two- and four-year targets set by NJDOT that this board first voted to endorse in 2018. Last October, NJDOT submitted a performance progress report to the Federal Highway Administration that covered the first two-year period. Based on their assessment, NJDOT chose to adjust the four-year targets for three of the performance measures. First, NJDOT is increasing the target for the percentage of the non-interstate national highway system pavement lane miles in poor condition. This change is due to data limitations and lack of experience with the new pavement metric, which initially led to an unrealistic target number. Next, the NJDOT has adopted a slightly more optimistic target for the percentage of bridges in good condition, reflecting recent trends. Third, NJDOT slightly increased the target for bridges in poor condition based on more current data. NJDOT has collaborated with the NJTPA and the state's other MPOs in developing these adjusted targets, which will serve as useful benchmarks toward achieving longer-term regional goals. The committee recommended the board approve the adjusted targets. This is listed as action item number two. Finally, central staff provided updates on recent activities, including Plan 2050 outreach, updated regional performance measure products, and recent Together New Jer-- North Jersey activities. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you.
In the interest of simplifying our board action for this online meeting, we have asked some of the board members to be prepared to offer a motion and second. So I understand that Hudson County would like to move this item, and that is the approval of the fiscal year 2022 Unified Planning Work Program.
Yes, Hudson County moves this item.
Thank you. And I understand Essex County might like to second it?
Yes, Essex seconds.
Thank you. Any comments from the board members? Any comments from members of the public on this item? Beverly, no, I'm sorry. Let's open it up to the public first. And Ted, I assume there is no one in the chat box asking a question on this item?
That's correct, Chair. No comments at this time.
Okay, so Beverly, will you please call and roll?
Okay, Essex?
Yes.
Hunterdon?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Sorry, yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT? Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Say one more time, Burgin?
Yes. Sorry, Beverly.
Motion is carried.
Thank you, Beverly, and thank you to everyone for support of that. The second action item is support for the adjusted pavement and bridge performance measure targets set by the NJDOT. And I understand that perhaps NJDOT might like to move this item?
Move, yes. Mike Russo?
Thank you. And do we have a second from, I believe, Essex County?
Essex seconds.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the board members on this action item? Hearing none. Do we have any comments from members of the public on this item? Hearing, no come, no questions. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Burgin?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Jersey City? Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Essex.
Union.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Governor's Office.
Yes.
NJDOT.
Yes.
Port Authority.
Yes.
Citizens Representative.
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you again for everyone who supported that action item. I'll call on Commissioner Charles Kenny, Chair of the Freight Initiatives Committee, to give the committee report, and good morning, Charlie.
Good morning. I am pleased to report on the February meeting of the Freight Initiatives Committee, where we heard our annual review and report on the port and maritime activities in the region. Our first guest speaker was Bethan Rooney from the Port Authority. Ms. Rooney said that even with the pandemic, the volume of containers handled at the port continued to rise in 2020, surpassing previous years. But the growth was not uniform for all sectors. Volume from the port's three auto processors was initially down 40%, but recovered during the last six weeks of the year with the arrival of the 2021 models. Rail volume grew by 7%, but the businesses, but the business at the ports, two cruise terminals, was down 91%, and bulk commodities were down 17%. Ms. Rooney highlighted that after several canceled sailings during the early months of the pandemic, the port handled the equivalent of eight months of containerized cargo in the last five months of 2020. Ms. Rooney also noted that port stakeholders, including the New York Shipping Association, the International Longshoremen's Association, and the Council on Port Performance, are working to manage cargo volumes and simultaneously keep port workers healthy and safe. Ongoing investments by the Port Authority and its partners continue to focus on improving terminal capacity and access. Ms. Rooney said the Port Authority and the Army Corps of Engineers are studying the feasibility of further deepening and widening port channels to accommodate increasingly larger ships. The Port Authority is also partnering with Conrail on rail improvements, including constructing the Waverly Loop North of port and work and design work for the southbound connector project. On the environmental sustainability front, she said Port Authority programs have significantly reduced air pollutants in the last 10 years, despite a growth in cargo volume of 47%. Next, Marcus Schwanki of Domler Trucks North America and Chris Grotto of the International Motor Freight briefed the committee on plans to electrify the vehicles that move containers at the port. Funding for this project was awarded through the NJTPA Transportation Clean Air Measures Program, and it recently received additional funding through the New Jersey Volkswagen Settlement. Following successful tests on the West Coast, battery electric tractors will be deployed at the port as part of a pilot program beginning in 2022. The vehicles are proven to, proven to lower operating expenses while benefiting the environment. The pilot includes a charging park, stationary battery storage, and solar power support. Also at the meeting, we learned that the NJDOT's fiscal year 2021 freight rail assistance grants included, included an award to Morris County to advance work on the Dover and Rockaway realignment project, which was part of NJTPA's Pilot Freight Concept Development Program. NJDOT will open its fiscal year 2022 freight rail assistance programs for applications in July. And this, Madam Chair, this concludes the Freight Initiatives Committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jack Kelly. No, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kenny, I apologize, Charlie.
That's right.
Next is our planning. Next is our planning for the 2050 presentation from Eric Zimmerman, Deputy Executive Director and Director of Transportation Programs for the National Association of Regional Councils. Eric is responsible for the transportation portfolio, which includes advocating for regional priorities on Capitol Hill and keeping members informed and engaged. Prior to NARC, Eric spent nearly a decade at a nonpartisan budget watchdog organization. He has a BA in political communications from the George Washington University and an MS in environmental studies from the University of Montana. Please welcome Eric Zimmerman, and thank you so much for coming back to the NJTPA today.
Absolutely, thank you so much for having me here. I hope, I hope everybody can see my slides okay, if I could get a word that that's the case.
Yes, I can see it.
Excellent, thank you very much. Well, thanks, thanks so much for having me. I do see a lot of familiar faces and names, and it's a pleasure to be with you, even if virtually in these, in these strange times. For those that are on that might not know who NARC is, we are an association of metropolitan and regional planning organizations from across the country. Many of our members work on transportation, and that's what I'm here to talk about today. Also work on a wide variety of other topics, economic development, resiliency, environmental initiatives, and the like. And so we represent them in Washington, both to Congress and, and in administrative matters. And so I'm here to talk to you a little bit about what we're seeing in Washington, especially on the legislative front. And the best way I came up to describe what's going on right now in Washington is sort of a swirl, and I do want to clarify that this is not the toilet bowl kind of swirl that I'm talking about. This is more of the beautiful tapestry of colors coming together to form what we hope is a beautiful palette, but since we are talking about Washington, I thought I'd best clarify that. And into that swirl, there are a number of things that are coming together that are making right now a very interesting time in terms of policy. Obviously, the biggest among them is COVID and the response to COVID, including economic recovery. We also obviously have a new administration, a change in the control of the, of the US Senate. For purposes of transportation, we have FAST Act is being, is expiring in September. We have a new Rockstar DOT Secretary for perhaps the first time ever earmarks reconciliation. These are all the things that are sort of swirling around right now that are important background to what is going on in Washington and what we expect here over, over the coming months. So let me take a little bit of a deeper dive into some of those and give you a little perspective on, on what I'm saying. First, I'm going to talk a little bit about the administration's principles, and then we'll talk about the three major pieces of legislation that are currently under consideration or, or we expect here in the future. So as mentioned, COVID remains at the very top of the list, and I think closely aligned with economic recovery as, as important principles for the new administration. But I think also equity and climate, and you could probably come up with a few others, are also very high on that list, and I think speak quite a bit to how legislation will be shaped here in the near term and the longer term, and so I think are important to keep in mind as we're talking about legislation in Washington. I won't spend too much time on the COVID response package. I think folks are probably aware that this bill is now back in the House hands. This is being done through a process called reconciliation, which are elements related to the budget and spending, and allows for passage by a simple majority, and it's especially important in the Senate. The Senate over the weekend passed its version of the bill after making some changes to the House version, and we do expect the House will sign, will pass that bill perhaps as early as tomorrow and send it to the President's desk for signature. This, of course, is a very important bill for a number of reasons. Chief among them that it provides quite a bit of funding for state and local initiatives, which I know are important for, for many of you. But from a transportation perspective, it's a little bit, there isn't quite as much in this one as we expected some other legislation. There is some money for transit, another $30.5 billion for transit, and, and you can see another smattering, Amtrak gets some, some additional funding. No money for highways and bridges and the like, but that will come in, we expect in future legislation. As I said, this is expected to be taken up tomorrow with a self-imposed deadline of March 14th, which is when unemployment insurance expires, and so we do expect that this bill does appear likely to be headed for passage and signature before that point. But I think what's perhaps more interesting for, for the purposes of today's conversation are the other two pieces of legislation, and that includes, first, the COVID recovery package, and what we expect from this bill is, is more of a sort of medium-term approach. This will take a little bit longer to come together than some, some of the immediate response legislation. The most likely path here, I do think, is through a similar reconciliation-type approach. I will put a caveat on that. Over the weekend, Senator Manchin has indicated that he does not anticipate allowing, since he is sort of the deciding vote or the sort of middle vote in the Senate, he does not anticipate supporting a bill for infrastructure that is through reconciliation, so that remains something to keep an eye on, and we'll see how that shapes up. But that, I still do think that the most likely path to getting an investment of this type done is through, is through reconciliation. The size of the bill is still unclear. We've heard indications from $1 to $3 trillion, and as I mentioned, there have been every indication that infrastructure is going to be at the center of this, this bill. Infrastructure sort of writ large, I mean, it's roads, bridges, broadband, transit, but also power sector, buildings, housing, perhaps, and so there are a lot of opportunities within this for, in a lot of directions. And one thing that's going on in Washington, I think it's, it's, it's good to hear a little bit about it, that there seems to be a bit of a blurred line in the discussions as we're talking about this, these bills, between this sort of infrastructure package reconciliation approach, and then the reauthorization of the, of the transportation program. They're kind of being talked about as though they're the same thing, but they really aren't, and in part because we expect the infrastructure side of, of legislation, if it is done through reconciliation, the reconciliation process is one where you really can't create new policy through that process. And so I really, that really means that if we were to try and do reauthorization through a process like that, it would not be like any reauthorization we've ever seen. It would not be a traditional reauthorization of a program. And because the, anything that's in a reconciliation bill has to have a budgetary impact, it has to have a Congressional Budget Office score, in other words, it has to increase the debt over a certain period of time. It's really pretty challenging to see them doing a gas tax increase or even a transfer of funding into the Highway Trust Fund, which desperately needs it and will need an infusion in order to get the next reauthorization done. But because those don't actually score, they're seen as intergovernmental transfers, this isn't really the, the place where we're going to see that get done either. And so I think this blurring is interesting. I think it speaks to the fact that there's a hope that some part of what they're about to do is going to go through a bipartisan process, which I think the reauthorization bill would do that, and, and sort of, so they blend, sort of blend it in with this other reconciliation infrastructure package, and then we'll see as this process plays out what comes, what comes out of that. But through reconciliation, what you really have an opportunity to do is create, is support existing programs, which is important. There are a lot of things that we could plus up, things like the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, where a lot of local funds are, are distributed for transportation, high-speed rail, you know, things like that. Existing programs are, are much easier to plus up in a reconciliation package. They already exist, the policy has already been created, and you can just put additional resources into those going forward. We'll see how this all plays out. There's going to be political pressure both from a, whether this can be bipartisan in any way, it's going to be important. There also could be some political pressure from both sides of the Democratic Caucus that, that will be interesting to watch as, as we proceed here as well. So then the second piece of legislation that we have our eye on is, of course, the FAST Act reauthorization. This is a more of a medium-to-long-term pursuit. You know, it really does depend on what happens with an infrastructure package. If that happens, then this probably gets pushed off even a little bit further, depending on how they, how they do that. The most likely path to something like this occurring is through regular order, where you have to have a bill that would get 60 votes in the Senate. We do have a deadline on this one, in that the FAST Act does expire at the end of September of this year, so something needs to happen by then, whether that's an extension, which we've seen many of those in the past, or they're able to get something done. You know, but something will have to happen by then to keep the program operating. Leaders in both chambers have indicated a very fast process, at least at the outset, because there's sort of this melding of infrastructure and, and reauthorization at the moment, everything is sort of moving at the same time, and so leaders from both chambers have said that they want a bill done in fairly short order. Of course, a fast process, at least initially, does not guarantee a fast outcome, and that's really what is most important, is that something gets across the finish line, and so we'll see how that, how that goes. The House bill, the, if folks remember last session, the House did pass a reauthorization proposal, it got rolled up into a larger infrastructure package that did pass the House, didn't go anywhere in the Senate, but we do expect that that House reauthorization bill will largely stay the same. There might be some changes and tweaks to match the new administration's priorities, but largely that bill, I think the form, the form of it will stay largely the same. Mr. DeFazio indicated last week he plans to reinstitute earmarks as part of reauthorization. I'll talk a little bit more detail on that in just a moment. And the Senate bill, which descended also, at least the committee also passed legislation last session on a bipartisan basis, had unanimous support in, in the committee. And of course, now the Senate has flipped, there's a new chairman in place, and so there is going to be a certain rewriting of that bill, though, you know, you still have, say, 90 senators remain the same in that chamber, and so you, you aren't going to get wholesale changes probably to that bill, but there will be, again, addition of certain things to, to match the administration's priorities. And one area that we've heard is a potential for improvement is actually the provision of local funding, so finding a way to make sure that we are maximizing the funds that are flowing down to the local level for prioritization on projects through, through MPOs, and so we'll continue to work with the Senate to, to push that forward. And we do know that they are asking now from senators for their priorities, so if you have anything that you want to reach out to your senator, your senators about, now would be the time to do that, as they are collecting priorities now for that, for that upcoming bill. So our priorities on FAST Act remain largely the same as they did last session, and that's primarily to increase money that flows to locals through their MPO. We, we are encouraging that in, in a couple of ways. First is through the program I mentioned earlier, the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. This is the one program that really sends substantial funds, both through the SDP portion and through the TAP, the Transportation Alternatives Program funding. That really is the fund that gets down to the local level for your prioritization onto projects. And then the other is PL, the Metropolitan Planning Funding. We're calling for a market increase in funding through PL. This is, of course, as you all know, the, the keep the lights on dollars that flow down to allow the MPO to operate. We work in coalition on many of these items with Local Officials and Transportation Coalition, which is the League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, the Conference of Mayors, the Association of MPOs, and the National Association of Development Organizations. And all together, we have been pushing recently to, to ask Congress to consider actually making STBG 100% suballocated, so all of the funding into that program flows through the population breakdowns that, that occur there, and, and that would definitely dramatically increase the amount of funding available at the local level, especially for areas over 200,000 who get to make decisions about where those funds are, are spent most directly. You know, that would be a, a market increase in funding for those areas. And so, you know, we'd love, certainly love for you to tell Congress how you would use these increases in funds, and how important this would be for local, you know, making things move at the local level. There are already some action occurring on this. The House in its bill last year increased the provision of suballocation, which is the percentage of funds that flows through local areas by population. They, they had an increase in their bill from 55% up to 60%. Mrs. Brownlee from California has a bill that would increase that to 65%. And of course, as I said, we're trying to start a conversation about considering the increase to, to 100%. In this day and age, when there are a lot of uncertainties, local areas have a lot of things that they're working on in, in the face of economic uncertainty, and really there's this market change in things like resilience and things like work. And really, there's this marked change in things like resilience and things like working on climate-related initiatives, where it's really the action is going to happen at the local level, and that's where we think change can be best effectuated. And so providing additional funding through the transportation program to local areas is really important in the face of some of those challenges. So a quick note about earmarks. As it says, earmarks are back, baby, and then I caveated that with a maybe, but there is a process in place. We knew that there was agreement between the appropriations leaders in the House and Senate to move on appropriations earmarks, and now we got word last week and a dear colleague from Mr. DeFazio to the TNI Committee that they will be collecting projects for earmarking. Two of the big changes that they're proposing that are a little different from years past and I think are important changes. First, that any project that would qualify for an earmark has to appear on a regional tip or a state step. We've gotten a lot of feedback on this from NJTPA and others, indicating that perhaps we need to encourage them to expand the list of places where they might take projects from to include long-range plan, to include perhaps the Unified Work Program, maybe even the SEDS, the development plan, if folks receive EDA funding, that all of these are important areas because the tip and step is already funded. And so there are projects that don't appear there that are perhaps the type of projects that communities would like to see earmarked, perhaps active transportation programs. There's, I think, a few categories like that. And so expanding the list out of where folks might draw projects from would be important. The other important change is that earmarks could now support, and earmarks always could, but to get away from this idea of shovel-ready as the only way to gauge a project's funding worthiness, earmarks can support any project phase. And so it's not just things that are automatically going to be ready to move tomorrow. It's also going to potentially fund phases of projects that are leading up toward construction, but before they're ready for that construction phase. There's still a lot we don't know here. The timing, I do think this is going to be a fast process, where they're going to start asking for projects, and there's going to be like a month that they have to get those projects in, and then they're going to close that list off. The amount of funding that will be earmarked and the sources of that funding within the program are also a question. You've got programs like the Projects of National and Regional Significance, that might be prime for earmarking. There's a few others, but we're not exactly sure what those are going to look like yet. And then there's finally the question of whether the Republicans are going to go along, whether the Senate Democrats would go along with House Democrats on this. So there's still quite a few questions before we get to an endpoint on this, but the question has been raised, and I do think we're going to see, at the very least, this process is kicking off in the House, and we'll see where that carries us going forward. And of course, no conversation with folks in New Jersey would be complete without at least a little bit of a nod to the Gateway Program. As the chairwoman indicated early on, she sees optimism, and I think she was talking a little bit more broadly, but I think there's also reason to believe that there could be some optimism for the Gateway Program as well, with some important factors pointing to potential future success. As I'm sure folks are aware, the Federal Transit Administration recently reversed its prohibition on local areas using loan funds that they themselves will be repaying as matching funds. Those can now again be used as matching funds, as they always had been before the Trump administration reversed that. And so that has certainly shifted the funding outlook to a great extent. Last year's House Invest Act, which was that broad infrastructure program, also had $10 billion for projects of national and regional significance. And at least Congressman Cyrus and probably others certainly read this in a release as a source of funding for Gateway, was very confident that this would be used, at least in part, to fund elements of the Gateway Program. And I would say similar, you know, earmarks would probably be a good place to secure additional support, depending on what programs they use to fund that earmark approach. The Senate flip certainly helps things with Senator Schumer now, the leader in the Senate. And I feel like this program, the Gateway Program in large, is sort of tailor-made for infrastructure and reconciliation. There are, I think, a number of programs that would be possible to put significant funding into and make it pretty clear where that funding is intended to end up, working on the, especially the tunnels. So I do think that there is, that positive outlook is well warranted, I think, especially on Gateway. So the "too long didn't read" version of all this, we're really focusing on the next stimulus bill and reauthorization, and that as we keep in mind the priorities of the Biden administration, I think there's an opportunity both within transportation and outside of transportation. There's just a whole host of new things that we might see significant increases in funding for and attention on workforce, EV charging, electrification, automated vehicles, housing, equity, broadband, resilience. I think the list is probably even quite a bit longer than that, but those are some of the real highlights and the ones that I think our members are sort of most interested in. So we'll be keeping an eye on that, finding a way to help provide some feedback on ways to structure this program to support these things that our members work on through these bills. And so that is my view of things from Washington right now. I'm always happy to hear feedback and learn what folks are thinking about, if you have any thoughts. But I think there's time for some questions as well, so I'm happy to do that as well.
Do any of the board members have questions for Eric? I believe you're muted again. Chair. I'm sorry. I'm looking at so many different things here. I apologize. Eric, no, thank you for that presentation. Quite informative, a lot to think about, and a lot to see what will play out over the next few weeks. This time, I'd like to open the door for public participation. So we're going to turn to that and request any comments or ask questions in the chat box. We'll wait until we call the comments from those that are on the phone. Please remember to mute yourselves when you're not speaking, and I'll do that now. But Ted, do we have any questions in the chat box?
Not at this time, Commissioner.
Then at that point, why don't we open it up for the phones and see if anybody would like to ask a question? This is unusual. We usually have at least a couple of people who have a question. Quiet today.
Commissioner, I believe Neil Weisman had signed up to speak in advance. I don't know if he's on the call now.
Neil, do you have anything you'd like to talk to us about today?
Yes, Chairman, Director, Trustees. My name is Neil Weisman for Bleak George. On March 1st, the Port Authority briefed the Hack Community Board 12 months program to restore the George, particularly the plans for the North Path, and we have some takeaways.
The North Path opened in spring '22 and remained the sole means of bike-ped travel through spring '26. The PA will rip out and restore the path to six foot nine inch. However, wedges will be added before and after the towers to allow cyclists to maintain speed through the tunnels. The North Path will now feature ASHTO-compliant access ramps with an alcove to view the palisades and the gathering area at the entrance. While these features may appear attractive, they are incompatible with a facility whose peak use regularly exceeds 600 uses per hour. Cyclists will descend through the gathering area to exit and accelerate to ascend the grade. Compare this to the current arrangement, which feeds cyclists directly onto city roads. In 2015, the level of service for the South Path with a 75-25 split between bikes and peds-runners was F or failing. The projected grade for the North Path with greater use is even worse. Federal Highway Administration characterizes E-level of services reach functional capacity may enjoy strong community support, but many are likely to avoid peak periods. F-Copy adds user conflicts should be expected, which means crashes. But this understates the risk. Federal Highway calculations do not include the high volumes of recreational cyclists, race teams, or e-bikes. And this is not speculative. Between 2010 and 2016, the Port Authority reported 39 cycling-related crashes on or near the George. Rather than widen the paths to comply with national standards, the PA's strategy accelerates the decline in service by inducing more pedestrians to use it. Another takeaway from the briefing was that when the South Path reopens in '26, the Port Authority will permit pedestrians to use either side. Previously, the PA has been adamant that the North Path would be reserved exclusively for cyclists. New York City houses 800,000 cyclists. Its bike grid has grown to 1,300 miles. Its annual bike share trips to 20 million. Last year alone, bike traffic across East River Bridges grew 30%. This will only accelerate. My question is, will the Port Authority preemptively pull the plug on by-state bike travel, or will it wait for the first fatality? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Neil. Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak?
Commissioner from the Federal Highway Administration, Sutapa, would like to provide a few updates.
Terrific. Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. This is Sutapa from the New Jersey Office of Federal Highway Administration. Just a very quick couple of updates. One is that USDAOT has announced the Infra Discretionary Grant Program. So the Notice of Funding Opportunity is now out there, and the grant applications will be received till March 19th. So if anyone is interested, please go to the website and look at the grant application and submit your grants. The second update I would like to provide is US Census Bureau is requesting public comment on the proposed criteria on urban area delineation determination. This is very important because it affects the amount of federal funds that the urban areas in New Jersey receives. So if you have any comments, please submit it. Go to the Federal Register and please submit it by May 20th. So again, May 19th is the closing of the infra grant application, and May 20th is the closing of public comments for urban area criteria. So these were the two updates that I had. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. Ted, any other questions there?
I don't see any at this time, Commissioner.
Just give it a moment if there's anyone else that wishes to speak. All right, hearing done, we will close the public session, and I thank those who have submitted comments. The time for our next meeting, the board will be meeting on Monday, May 10 at 10:30, and you'll be able to log in. The details will be provided. That's all I have. So can I have a motion to adjourn? You need to identify yourself.
Reorder, Kelly.
Seconded by Commissioner Kenny from Middlesex.
Thank you to both. All in favor? Thank you. And again, thank you to all. We had over 90 people participating today. That's appreciative. We certainly welcome the comments from the public. And I once again want to thank Eric Zimmerman for being available today to talk with the board and to the participants in the public. So thank you all, and we'll see you for our next board meeting on May 10. Have a good day and stay warm.